And I've got six o'clock, so six o'clock I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Face the Texas flag.
Honored with Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Item number two is the invocation for that, City Councilmember Charlie Tucker.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you do for us. We ask that you be with us through this council meeting and let us make the decisions that need to be made for everyone in Saginaw. And we thank you for everything else that you do for us, Father, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Charlie. Item number three is the audience participation that's covered on the screen. Please silence your cell phones, devices, et cetera, so we have a good meeting. Welcome to all the folks watching online. I hope there's good reception. You can hear me online. If you can, give me a shout out. Let me know you're listening. And audience participation, you are free to speak on any posted agenda item and just talk to the city secretary, or if there is a public hearing, you are free to come up, just wave and I will recognize you. So, moving on. Item number four is the consent agenda. Action regarding minutes of August 20th. B, action regarding resolution 2019-16 revised investment policy. C is action regarding ordinance 2019-14 settlement agreement between ACSC and Atmos Energy. D, action regarding purchase of two Chevy 1500 pickup trucks for Parks and Drainage Department. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Valerie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, arghing. Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum. We have a full house tonight. Item number five. At 6:02, we're in a public hearing. Item number five is public hearing, proposed 2019 property tax rate for physical year 2019-20 for that city manager, Gabe Ram.
Mayor and council, this is the first of two required public hearings that are part of our budget process. The next public hearing will be a week from today at 6:00 PM. We have advertised in our paper of record, Star Telegram, for this date, as well as next week. You will not take any action tonight, other than receive feedback. Final action on the tax rate, as well as budget adoption, is scheduled for September 17th. So, happy to answer any questions and recommend that you hear the public.
Counsel, any questions for the city manager? Mary?
Should it be appropriate to let tell the speech, anybody wants to speak from the public?
I think you can have the floor right now, if you would like.
I have a slide, if you need to comment. I still have anybody else? Anthony, you know, still there?
I think, you know, for many reasons, I would like us to go with the 14, let's see, the rollback rate instead of the one cent lower. And this information that we have in our background are quite a few changes that will allow us to go to the one cent lower. If we were to adopt the one cent lower rate, that would save the typical homeowner a dollar and forty-six cents per month. And in saving that typical average homeowner a dollar and forty-six cents a month, we would be raising facility fees for the rec center, for the aquatic center, for adoption fees for animal control. We would be delaying the hiring of three safety hires. We have new estimates for revenue that we might earn that have been raised. I would prefer to go with the original estimate that our finance director had put in the budget. And those estimates are based on historical data and her experience. And so, just to automatically randomly decide to put a higher amount on those items, just to be able to get to a certain tax rate, I don't believe that's appropriate. We have two weeks before we vote on this. So, I would just ask my fellow council members to take all these comments into consideration. To bring up the animal control, if we raise that fee for adopting animals, I believe the fee would be raised by ten dollars? By twenty dollars?
Twenty, yes, ma'am.
I think that's going to reduce the number of people who are willing to adopt animals. We're already past capacity. That causes us to have to euthanize. We have a policy against doing that if humanly possible, but I think that would make those cases more likely to occur. I also find it confusing that by saving the taxpayer a dollar and forty-six cents a month, we're asking our families to pay more to go to the rec center, to go to the aquatic center, to go to the summer camps. So, we're saving them a dollar forty-six, but in the next breath, we're asking them to spend more for these facilities that cities typically offer their residents at the lowest possible price that they can. So, we're targeting a certain element of our population, the ones that use those facilities, and kind of double dipping on them, you know? So, I think the fair thing to do is with the higher rate, it's spread out over all of our population. Another thing that I believe makes it important for us to adopt a higher rate, the one penny higher, it has been mentioned a few times, but it hasn't really been dwelled on very much in these meetings, that starting our next fiscal year, for at least three years, since our legislature only meets once every other year, once every two years, cities all across Texas are now unable to raise as much revenue as they have been able to raise in the past. That ability to raise revenue has been cut more than in half. So, while we have the ability to raise more revenue, this is the last year we can do that. That's when we need to spend the money to fund these items that next year and for at least the next three years, if not longer, we won't be able to fund these items. There were some items in the budget that the audience might not be aware, that even with the one cent lower or the one cent higher, there have been items on the budget that were asked for that will not be funded this year, no matter what the tax rate is. Even at the one cent higher, we will not be able to afford to repair the police department roof that is leaking. I don't believe we should ask our policemen to have to work in that kind of a facility where the roof is leaking. And there have been requests for one and a half additional staff for the rec center. Is that correct, Keith?
For community services, yes.
Community services? And then, an extra person for animal control. Those positions and those roof repairs will not be able to be funded this year, even at the higher one penny higher tax rate, which is a dollar forty-six per month. So, in my mind, we really have a responsibility to adopt that higher, one penny higher tax rate, to be able to spend the money that we have access to right now, that we will not have access to in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Counsel, anyone else?
I just have a comment, and I do want to, Gabe and your staff, let me tell you, you all have worked very hard in the calculus of this budget to do things that we've asked you to do, and I know that we're facing in the upcoming years, some restrictions that are put on us as a legislative body to raise taxes on the public. But I do want to make this clear. If we take to the voter a twenty cent increase in M&amp;O, the voters can decide for themselves if they want to increase M&amp;O by twenty cents. That's their call. What we're talking about here is what seven people can levy on the population. Last year, we levied the rollback rate, meaning that's the most we could possibly levy on you in a single year. We did it last year. During that, I had asked the city managers, is there any possible reason you can come up with that we would have to do this two years in a row? And his response then was, no. However, we did see an increase in health insurance this year that we were not anticipating. I do see that we are in a position as a legislative body to levy a higher tax on the public this year. But I think to do the rollback rate two years in a row communicates something to the citizens I don't think we need to be communicating. That means that we're throttling you every chance we get to take every bit of money we can from you, instead of demonstrating we're trying our very best not to do that. And I think what's been represented here tonight in raising some voluntary fees, because quite frankly, not everybody in the community uses the recreation center. Not everybody in the community utilizes our animal services. We all benefit from it in certain respects, but those are voluntary. I believe that if we're showing some increase in those areas, and we're showing that we're not taking the property tax levy to the maximum, we're communicating to the public that we're doing the very best that we can to keep our expenses and our wishes under control. So, I'm in agreement with Mary that it's a very small amount. We're talking about a very small amount from individuals, but we're talking about amounts that we, as a legislative body, levy on you. And my water's edge is, I want to be very careful about what I communicate to people when I'm reaching into their pocket and taking their money. And in this case, it may be a small amount, but what keeps us from doing it every year at the rollback rate? Nothing. This city will always have needs. There will always be leaky roofs. There will always be a need to patch a hole in a roadway. But we should not be communicating to you, as a legislative body, that we are willing year after year to take every bit of money that we can from you. And that's where my water's edge is. If you guys want to raise the tax rate twenty cents, we put it on a ballot and let you tell us. And we could afford a lot of stuff with twenty cents, let me tell you. But we up here should not put ourselves in a position to levy all we can, when we can. We need to demonstrate to you that we're doing the best we can to control our costs. Thank you very much, guys. I mean, you have done a spectacular job this year. Just wanted to tell you.
Thank you, Patrick. So, we're proposing at forty-five point nine cents, which is one cent under, as we mentioned. And the process, just for the public to understand, the process was, we had budget discussions the last several months, and then we had a budget workshop one Saturday, an open workshop, and said to the staff, and Kim, and folk, can you go back and scrub a little money? And that's what Patrick was mentioning. And I do appreciate Kim, and Dolph, and Gabe, and it wasn't an easy thing we had to do. They did it well. I appreciate it. I'm happy with the budget where we are, because the only, the big increases are to add a police officer and two fire positions, emergency management position and a fire position. So, I think that's something that's a big need for the community. I don't think folks will have a big issue with that. One thing I've learned is when you call 911, people expect a trained, good fire department to show up at your door, or police department. So, we will always provide that. We committed to that. Public safety is our top priority. So, that's really where we are with this. Anything else, counsel? I don't want to dominate. Sandy, go ahead.
I also want to commend the staff for the work that you did at looking at what we can do about the fees and cutting that budget, as Patrick had requested at the last meeting, about, what, $300,000? I think this has shown that we're able to meet the challenges that are coming up in our future. We're going to have to make the difficult decisions and still be able to provide some of the best services to our community. So, I commend you guys, and I also think that, you know, we can stay at the forty-five rate, understanding that, what, eighteen percent of this money is based on the city taxes? And, you know, the rest of it is county and JPS and the community college. So, you know, the city portion may be a dollar and a half change, but the rest of it's going to be a little bit higher from the other entities.
Counsel, anyone else? All right, then I will open up to the public. This is a public hearing. Anyone can come up and speak. You have three minutes to speak on this issue, the budget, the tax rate, anything you would like. So, the floor is yours. Yes, sir. No, Jan. Jan was up first. Jan, please, come. Ladies first.
In a nutshell.
Will you state your name? I'm sorry.
Jan Young, thank you very much. I've been here since 1984, so I've seen the city go from very tiny to very big, in my opinion. What I'd like to say about the fees going up, the people who can afford it least are the ones who are going to suffer the most. I, for one, am in position to go ahead and pay more taxes. And there are a lot of people who aren't. But at the same token, I think we all, as a city, benefit from whatever we are doing for everybody. It improves me, it improves the people who use the facilities, it improves our community, and it improves us working together as a community. We get to know each other better if we don't let people in who can't afford it anymore. And the little bit of taxes, if it's a hundred dollars a year for me, I'm happy to do it. And I just wanted to let you all know that that's how I personally feel about the taxes going up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Sir?
Yes.
Come on up.
I'm on there.
Please just state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Larry Shide. I'm pretty new to this, but I'm big in the schools. I went to Austin and really fought them hard with school vouchers and everything else. But you know what it is? I don't see the whole picture here, because I know there's a lot more to it, like this year, they approved the nine billion dollar school, five billion dollar tax, right? What kind of breaks are we getting through all that supposedly what Austin gave us, right? What do we say on this?
So, I can't speak for what other taxing entities may or may not do. I believe Senate Bill Three affected school finance that may lower the tax rate some amount, but I couldn't tell you what other taxing entities might do.
Supposedly, September, everybody should know between the nine billion for the school and the five billion for the property tax, how much each of this, what kind of break we should get.
It's my understanding that the property tax rate for most school districts will decrease. However, being in a growing community, there's more students and more people to serve, so I wouldn't want to comment on the numbers.
And the longer picture here, too, how many more new houses do we get in this community? And pretty much, like my son, for instance, his house went from 136 to 247. He's paid five thousand in taxes. So, I'm pretty sure all these new houses that are all over got to be paying five thousand, because you're not getting housed for under 250 now. You know, so that should be helping us out, too, right? And for this link in the, I understand the police department gets a half a tax, a cent tax rate for all the sales. Could you take something out of there to fix the roof? Is that double dipping or?
Yeah, so, and in fact, after the conclusion of the council meeting, we have our crime control and prevention district meeting, which is actually, the city council members are on the board, but we have dedicated sales tax that pay for police officers and equipment, which has the net effect of lowering the property tax rate. So, to your point about new growth, it is new revenue, but new, especially homes and new residents require more services.
See, what I'm trying to say, this picture means nothing to us, because you should have the whole picture. How many new houses? How much money you're going to pay to get? How much the police get for a half a cent tax? That I could understand more. This, right away, increases. Why? You know, when we're getting all these new houses, see, I'm new to this. I know you're doing a great job, but I know there's a lot more money. I've been to Austin, the nine billion, the five billion. We should get some kind of break.
So, I-
In order not to raise anything.
Sure. I would recommend, we have put our budget workshops, we started back in March. We put all our presentations online. You can find it off our website. Happy to answer any questions you might have. They're pretty informative and have a lot of detail.
Believe me, I love living here. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yes, ma'am. Please, come on. Just state your name for the record.
My name's Catherine Johnson, and I'm one of the new residents here. I've been here six months. So, I understand what you're telling me, because my property taxes are seventy-six hundred dollars. So, yeah, a dollar forty-six may not sound like a lot, but when I'm already paying seventy-six hundred dollars, it hurts a little bit. But what I'm wondering, and I haven't looked at your spreadsheets, honestly, but what about the businesses that are coming in? There's businesses everywhere coming in. That's going to generate more revenue. How is that being put into there, where it's not just on the residents? I mean, are we looking at that as the advancement? Because I mean, we've got tons of new stuff coming in.
Sure. So, and this might draw your attention to this graph, but the average, under the proposed tax rate, the average city portion tax bill is eight hundred four dollars. So, you had mentioned seven thousand dollars. That's not all city taxes.
Oh, no, it's all the area.
Of course, right. There's other taxing entities, as Councilmember Big Horse mentioned. So, any property owner in the city of Saginaw would pay the rate that the city council determines for property tax. The values, as you know, vary. So, businesses that generate sales taxes are great, because they pay for things like police services. We have dedicated street sales taxes, and the more sales taxes we get, the less prepay tax is necessary to fund the same level of services.
Right, because I know we're getting like, yeah, Burger King, or we're getting, like, Here Now, we're getting IHOP. I mean, that is all sales taxes.
So, we are, but not the city of Saginaw, unfortunately. Some of the retail growth you see are unfortunately on the outside of the city limits.
Chick-fil-A's across the street in Fort Worth, unfortunately.
I didn't say Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, the Burger King, yeah.
I understand.
You know, all the things you may see at, like, Basswood and Blue Mound, that's actually the city of Fort Worth. We're working on retail and restaurant recruitment in Saginaw. The more sales tax we can generate, the less impact we have on property taxes. Unfortunately, on Bailey-Boswell, there's some new growth that's in the city of Fort That answers your question.
Okay, one of the questions was about businesses. What percentage of our property tax comes from businesses? What's commercial?
Sorry, Kim. I don't want to say off the top of my head. Let me see if I've got a graph here.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Kim.
I'll take that one. It's all me.
You're talking about commercial property tax versus residential property tax. Kim, I know at least it's in the fifty percent range, at least.
I can get that information to you, but I don't want to guess. I don't want to say something that's wrong.
I know. It's a large percentage, but-
It's a big percentage.
It is. And we want it to be bigger. You're right. Your point is absolutely well taken. We want more, more commercial dollars, absolutely.
And I know you guys worked hard. Believe me, I know. So, I do appreciate everything you guys have done, and you guys are, you know, sticking up for us and doing it, but I think, you know, we do have to look at everything, and then maybe there's a halfway, median point somewhere. You know, the fees are going up on some of the facilities, but how much are they going up? I haven't seen the graphs or anything yet. I've been very busy in my own world. But, you know, if it's only five or six dollars, then that's doable. And then you're looking at animal services, and all I keep hearing is adoption fees. What about the registration fees for the animals? It's three dollars. What if we raise that to ten? I'm just, I'm thinking aloud. What if we raised it to like ten, or something like that?
That's actually suggested.
We've got them on the screen, if you'll look. I think they can find it.
And I don't plan on ever getting mine impounded, just so you know.
Okay.
That's my plan. I mean, because that would help a little bit, but then the adoption fees, maybe, you know, put it out to people and say, okay, instead of ten, maybe we do fifteen. And then the adoption fees, I'm kind of surprised the shelter's at a capacity, because we just acquired the shelters, and they adopted all the cats, and then we had nine dogs left. We had that many come back in already? That's crazy.
Our staff is incredibly busy with, once it-
Your staff is amazing, just so you know.
We have a very good staff, and we've had times where we were overwhelmed with cats, and sometimes we're overwhelmed with dogs, to where we couldn't accept any more cats that came in. The nine that you're talking about are generally large dogs, and we have a harder time adopting those out.
I know. Do you all have a spay and, or neuter and release program?
We don't have a staff person on that, but we do require that they become spayed and neutered once they're adopted.
Not spaying, but like a trap and release for feral cats? Like a trap, neuter, and release program?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Just thinking aloud. So, I appreciate everything you guys have done. As I said, I'm still pretty new to the city and everything, so I'm still learning everything. But I appreciate you guys.
Well, we're glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? It's a public hearing. It's open to all, anyone who wants to speak, so. If not, then at 6:28, I will close this public hearing. So, this was the first public hearing for the tax rate. Our second public hearing for this tax rate, proposed tax rate, will be held September 10th at 6:00 PM at the City Hall, and the adoption of that proposed tax rate will be held and considered at the city council meeting on September 17th at 6:00 PM at the City Hall. So, please make a note of those. They will be on the city website, but that is our plan for the tax rate for 2019 through 2020. So, moving on. Item number six. So, at 6:28, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding request for approval to amend 2016 comprehensive plan from office professional to neighborhood commercial, and to change the zoning of the special to neighborhood commercial on approximately 5.93 acres of land and a portion of tract four abstract 1849 of the A.F. Albright survey. For that, Rick Trias, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. You'll recall in last month, you considered this item, well, actually, on July 23rd, you considered this item, and there was discussion at that time about what constituted a nursing home versus a skilled nursing facility. If the zoning was approved to go to neighborhood commercial, that would require a special use permit. So, the council tabled that item at that time and wanted to consider the special use permit and the zoning request concurrently. So, at your discretion, at the council's discretion, we'd recommend that the next item, which is also a public hearing, is the special use permit. That is the accompaniment of this item. I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about that item, if you want to open that public hearing. Again, this requires a special use permit under the proposed zoning. The planning and zoning commission met on August 13th, and unanimously recommended approval of a specific use permit to be considered by council. So, with that, I'd recommend that you open up the public hearing for the next item also, so that you can receive public comment. The applicant is here. Chuck Start is representing the applicant, and he'll be- The applicant is here, Chuck Stark is representing the applicant, and he'll be able to answer any questions or present their proposal to you, so.
So, Mr. Attorney, can I have two public hearings open at the same time? How does that work legally?
In, in this circumstance, with them being the same subject matter, in addition, we've all, also already had one public hearing, basically all the circumstances considered together, it would not bother me if this evening you held these two public hearings concurrently.
Okay. Then at six thirty, I will open the public hearing for item number seven, consideration action regarding request for approval of a specific, specific use permit to be allowed to operate a skilled nursing facility, nursing home on property located at the northeast corner of West McIlroy Boulevard and North Knolls, again, the portion of a tract four abstract eighteen fifty-nine A.F. Albright survey. So, we're open. So, Council, questions for staff about these two issues? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
On item number seven, I just want to be clear in my understanding that this skilled nursing facility is indeed the nursing home instead of the short-term care that was presented to us earlier.
I will say that during the last month, about a month ago, I think the applicant submitted information to all the council members regarding how they would operate the facility. There was a lot of discussion of a skilled nursing home, or a skilled facility versus a long-term care at that council meeting, which is what precipitated this action, but the applicant should be able to address that for you tonight.
Do we want to hear from the applicant now, or is there any other council questions at this point?
The only thing I would like to hear is affirmation from Ms. Beerling that, that, and I, she's here, I didn't see you there. So with her here, I'm, I'm fine opening up to the floor. And I just didn't see her there, and I wanted to make sure that somehow her voice made it into this room. Okay.
So now I'd like to hear from the applicant either, Ms. Beerling or her representative, so whoever would like to speak. And please identify yourself.
Good evening, my name is Rick McNeely, two-one-seven-two-six Hardy Oak Boulevard, San Antonio, Texas, seven-eight-two-five-eight. I work for Smithers Merchant Builders, and we are the builder developer on the property, on the project from purchasing the land through turning the key over to the eventual operators. Our, our goal is to put up a fifty-two thousand square foot, plus or minus, skilled nursing facility, which will encompass both short-term care, which will be perhaps a week-long, up to long-term care, depending on what the needs of the community are. The operator has not limited themselves to saying, we're only taking X. They are open, they're, they have a good idea of what the community needs and what their typical facility has, but they are totally open up to having long-term, whether somebody wants to stay there long-term, or whether somebody just has a short-term need with perhaps physical therapy associated with it. So they, they will span the entire globe. So typically, these facilities are called skilled nursing facilities, they've all, some cities call them nursing homes, some call them convalescent homes, some call them long-term care facilities, lots of different names that this facility will, will, will perform. The only thing they're not currently set up for, or I have not been informed that they're going to do, is a long-term Alzheimer's care. Other than that, because that requires a lot of special stuff added to the building that we're not currently proposing. But that would be, they would be open to that if there was a need and they were willing to go down that road. The project is gonna have a hundred and twenty-eight beds, it will be operated by M.L. Healthcare. It's expected that when the facility is fully open, it'll have about a hundred employees with a annual employee revenue of about four million dollars. We are, on the site plan itself, we're proposing an eight-foot screening fence against the rear properties in order to help alleviate, that's actually part of your code, but still alleviate some of the nuisance factors, you could say, from something being next door that's not an open field. We are also, the way the site plan is set up, is we don't have any parking that points back to the back residential. I made all of the parking pointing the other direction. And we'll, we'll be, our goal was, would be to keep that idea and that concept. There are some things playing into with the roundabout and, or the traffic signalization that might impact our, our site plan, but the, the goal right now is to not point any cars at the residences behind us. We're also proposing to use downlighting. We've done projects that are in what, that are near army bases, that require us to have black sky or dark sky ordinances, so we don't have any light pollution leaving the site. Same type of thing, we'd, we'd propose at least along our back, so that we're not imposing any sort of light pollution or light annoyance on the, the properties behind us. It would, if anything, it would be in the front, which would be along a major roadway, someday being four lanes, I would, all the way through. I think I answered your questions, but if you want, I can answer questions now?
Yeah, Council questions? I have one question. So onsite, physical therapy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what, that's what I was saying.
I have one question for Barbara. Is this what you want this time?
It's exactly what you want.
And when you say market, essentially market-driven, whatever the, whatever the community needs?
Correct.
Can you, can you speak to that just a little bit? Just so I understand, because I know that we, when we were talking about long-term before, we were talking in the ninety-day range, but we, we could potentially be talking about to end-of-life?
A lot of it has to do with money. I mean, if they have, if they're under Medicare, the rules are a little different than Medicaid. Medicaid allows as long as you need. Medicare has certain limitations. Private pay, there are no, no limitations. Insurance, there are sometimes limitations. When, when it was spoken of ninety days, because I wasn't here at the last meeting, when they said ninety days, a typical resident is what we were speaking to, not, not as a, a brick wall.
Okay.
Most people come in, they're under, they're under Medicare, they're limited to a hundred days of Medicare per year. And so they come in and they, they go to the hospital, they come to the skilled nursing facility, they get rehabbed, and they go back to their loved ones and their life, and they continue on down the road. Sometimes when you have people that are on Medicaid, they don't, they have disability or, long-term disabilities that don't allow them, and the families aren't able to take care of them. In that case, Medicaid has different rules that allow longer stays. Matter of fact, I don't think there's an end date on Medicaid. So, yeah, so ninety days was only talking for the typical resident that's on Medicare. Private health insurance, I mean, private long-term care insurance depends on the individual, private pay, you know, there's no limit to that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Mayor?
Do you have any people who come there that are not old enough to be on Medicare? That their doctor requires them to rehab at a facility, but they're not old enough for Medicare?
Absolutely, this, this is not an elderly home. It's a, it's a skilled nursing facility. And, and sometimes people that are not on Medicare need, their, their spouse may not be able to take care of them at home, they, they, either they work or they're not able to give them the care that they need. That's what this is for. This is to help, in many cases, to bridge the gap.
And then one other question. Sometimes someone might get a knee replacement and they need to go to rehab two or three times a week. Do you have any of those drop-in type, or do all of them actually spend the night there all the time?
Yeah, come on up.
Hello, my name's David Frick, and I'm the president of Smithers Merchant Builders. There are a lot of, and we don't operate the homes, but we've been developing them all over the south for about thirty-five years. There's some rules as far as outpatient therapy that HHS C has that somewhat limit non-residents from coming in for therapy services. There's some, there's been some pilot programs out, unfortunately, a lot of those failed. But as a resident there, they get the therapy services covered by whatever, Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance. Once they leave, it's difficult to get them back in, and the problem, the, the problem comes down to money, because they, they don't get paid once they've been discharged. So at that point, they're really going to more of a, a therapy-type business, unfortunately. I, I hope one of these days there are programs that allow, especially if they, I think it would be great if there, if there were a resident, they went home and they still needed to come back once or twice a week, it'd be nice. But right now, the, the payer sources don't do that. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, too.
No, and you're right, and unfortunately, I have experience with that with my mother, so it's, it's very common, they, they will come in just for rehab and then, then go. And once you have outpatient rehab, that's another facility. That's one of the, a box kind of facility, not an inpatient kind of place. So that's very, very typical, and I'm sure that's how this place would work.
It is. And one of the positives is, depending on the well-being of the person, if it's a knee or hip replacement, medic, a lot of the time, those are Medicare residents when they come in, and they get ninety to a hundred days. Well, the goal is, if they do their therapy right, they're pretty much taken care of by then and they're out.
Thank you, sir. Council, other questions?
I, I do have a couple of comments. The, the daytime population increase, the community is a plus. We certainly need to increase the number of employees that are here in the city during the day. I know that that's one of the metrics we watch on economic development. This, there are also opportunities that this will bring to the community for additional businesses and services. Probably this gap, the physical therapy, sounds like there may be some business opportunities there, that I know Alora probably has now checked a couple of boxes off on her checklist over there. But this is a great addition to the community, it's something the community has needed. I just, I wish it could be even more than what it is, but it's certainly a great addition. And I know there have been some folks, and they're sitting in the audience right now, that have worked a very long time to try and make this happen, so really appreciate it. Thank you guys for all you're doing in the community, and let us know if we can support you any other way.
All right, Council, other questions? I, if not, I do have one request to speak on this item number six, and that's Sean and Christina Glover. Would y'all like to speak? You're certainly welcome to, if you would like to at this point. If not, I will open up the floor. This is a public hearing, anyone can speak on this item, item six and seven, so please approach. Yes, sir, please, come on up.
Yeah, I'm William Kelly. I just got questions. I haven't looked at anything, I just saw, got the mail flyer to come in here and be talking about it. How tall is this gonna be?
Yeah, so it was a long, about thirty feet, single story.
Single story, the, the peak of the road would be somewhere between thirty, thirty-three feet, depending, I can't remember the top of my head, but that's kind of-
All right, and you said all the parking's gonna be in the front instead of in the back?
No. What I, what I stayed with, the parking that is in the rear, it's currently spaced from the building, so the headlights are pointing toward the building, as being, as opposed to pointing away from the building, up against the fence.
Yeah, because I've actually lived right behind where that's gonna get built, so that's why I'm curious.
Whatever we're up against, I try to keep my parking pointing away from, in order to cut down on the amount of headlights.
All right, and how long is the construction gonna take, once it gets going?
Right about twelve months, twelve, thirteen months.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you, yes, sir. Yes, sir, please, approve. Come on up.
Larry Scheid. You know nursing homes, they're getting a big black eye, you see what's going on, they're getting arrested. I guess you guys would have a, I don't know what your building is, whoever runs this nursing home, will they have a, a plan for like, when they go, for the people to go? Will there be a safe period for them?
Yes, the, the state actually partners as part of their operations, emergency management plan, that they will review prior to us opening the buildings. So they, they, and the state is very thorough in their review. Unfortunately, I think the state is more thorough on new buildings than on buildings that have been operated for a long time. The new buildings, there's a whole emergency management plan that they review to make sure they cover almost any contingency that state or anybody can think of, and how they're going to solve it, and how they're making evacu- I know Houston, we have a lot of projects with, that they have to deal with hurricane, hurricane evacuation, what they're gonna do, very similar to this, this location, you need to, the four-fourth, that's why we need to-
Thanks, sir. All right, anyone else? Any other folks like to speak on this issue? If not, then at six forty-four, I will take us out of the public hearing. I will entertain a motion on item number six first.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we pass the ordinance for the request for their approval to amend the two thousand, oh, another, that's the wrong one, no, that's right.
Item six, yeah.
From the comprehensive plan from office professional to neighborhood commercial and to change the zoning from office professional to neighborhood commercial on the Albright survey, as presented.
Charlie's second. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Here's the motion passes. I now entertain a motion on item number seven.
Mayor, I make a motion for the action regarding a request for the approval of a specific use permit to be allowed to operate a skilled nursing facility on property located on the northeast corner of North Knolls Drive in West McIlroy Boulevard on the Albright survey as presented.
Thank you, Valerie. You have a second? Cindy? All right, Cindy will second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, folks. Thank you, ma'am. We are, we're now in business together, so good luck. We look forward to great things. All right, moving forward, we're going on to item number eight. I'll let everybody clear this quickly.
I'm gonna recuse myself. He's gonna recuse himself.
On, on eight, okay, let me-
Yes.
All right, item number eight, consideration action regarding approval of change order number one, Willow Creek Park Playground. And Mr. Farr is gonna abstain and recuse himself from this issue.
Yes.
Thank you, Patrick, we'll come get you. We won't forget to get you. All right, so consideration action regarding change order number one for Willow Creek Park Edition Willow Creek Station contract. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, on July twenty-third, council awarded the contract for Project Dream Play Willow Creek Playground, and during that discussion, prior to the award, there was a discussion about adding two pieces of equipment, all accessible, wheelchair accessible, pieces of equipment. We went back to the contractor, he submitted a change order, the change order's been reviewed by the, by the landscape architect and by staff. The total amount of the change order is seventy thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, and we recommend approval of the change order.
Council questions? Just clarify, where's this money coming from?
A portion of it will come from the tax note that the council approved, a meeting or two ago, and I believe that's, is that correct?
Right, we've got an amount budgeted in the general fund, then the fundraising effort will pay for part of it, and then about two hundred and seventy-five thousand will come from the tax note, two, the two million dollar tax note that was approved.
I was just curious, this, this seventy thousand specifically, where'd that come from? Change order's seventy thousand dollars, right?
Tax note.
The tax note, okay. Excellent, thank you. All right, Council, questions? Any other questions on this? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the approval of change order number one to Willow Creek Park Playground for the handicap.
Okay.
Charlie's second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Excellent. Let me, let me get Mr. Farr. All right, moving on to item number nine, consideration action regarding award of contract for Fairmont fifteen-inch sanitary sewer, phase one. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. You recall in March of this year, we brought an item to you rejecting bids on the Fairmont Sewer, which is a bore contract that goes underneath the railroad and Saginaw Boulevard. That project was well over budget, so we decided that we would take that back, try to do some plan improvements, enhancements to increase the contractor's awareness of what was being asked of him. During that time in March, later in March, we were notified by BNSF that they were expanding their tracks on the east side of the, which required us to relocate or at least look at our facilities within their right-of-way. There are two items, one, an eight-inch water line, and then a sewer line that are gonna have to be encased, and actually boarded, new location for the sewer line. So we, we bid the project, and we only received one bid, unfortunately, for that project, a little over two-point-one million dollars, so, and that was low bidder is Atkins Brothers Equipment Company, Inc. We reviewed the bid, we recommend that the contract be awarded to that contractor. This project is, is on borrowed time, it was on borrowed time when we started design, so we recommend award of the contract.
All right, Council, questions?
Rick, what's the amount that we're over original budget right now?
We're four hundred thousand dollars over the original budget on the first bid. Actually, this contract has been broken into two units, unit one is the actual contract that was bid earlier this year. It actually came in under a good bit from what was- It actually came in under a good bit from what was bid back at the first part of the year. The bulk of the contract is the BNSF work, or more, a little more than half of the work is BNSF work, so.
So collectively between both of them, we're four hundred thousand over what we had anticipated in cost?
No, just unit one. We didn't anticipate the BNSF work at all. That was new work and we hold licenses with BNSF to allow our utilities to cross her right-of-way, so when they expand their util, their operation, we have to jump, we have to respond to it, and, and that's what this is. That, that portion of the contract is about one point two million dollars.
And this comes from enterprise fund, fund balance, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Questions?
All right, counsel, other questions? Cindy?
Have we ever worked with the Atkins Brothers Equipment Company in the past?
I don't, I haven't been here long enough to know that whether we have had a contract. Andrew?
The city has, they did a twelve-inch water line, one fifty-six from Grand Central North to the, that was about three years ago.
I will say, my previous experience, Atkins Brothers is a well-known contractor, has been around for a while, so I was having concerns about their ability to do the work.
Okay, thank you.
What would be the timing of this, duration?
I can't remember the work.
So like Eric was saying, the project's broken into unit one and unit two, so I believe unit one, which is the BNSF work, allocated a hundred and twenty minutes for them to do the work, and then unit two's a hundred and eighty minutes.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
And they're consecutive, right? Not concurrent?
They're consecutive.
So it's a year?
Yeah.
We'll say also that BNSF has already awarded the contract for the expansions of the tracks, so, you know, they, they gave us a lot of notice.
Such is life, okay. Counsel, other questions? Any other questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the award of contract, this is for both units, unit one and two, as recommended by staff.
Second? Cindy, thank you, Cindy. All those in favor raise your right hand. Are those opposed? There is none. Thank you. Good work, staff, thanks for getting this, moving this forward. All right, item number ten, consideration action regarding resolution two thousand nineteen dash seventeen, creating the citizen bond committee and appointing members. For that, Assistant City Manager Dolph Johnson.
Mayor and council, city staff along with the city attorney have drafted a resolution which will create the citizens' bond committee, will appoint the members of that committee, outline the composition and duties of that committee. We had, once we announced we were looking for volunteers, we had twenty-seven people volunteer to serve, twenty-seven citizens volunteered to serve on this committee. Our schedule will be that we will meet throughout the next three months, September, October, November, evaluating the financing and the capital improvement plans to make recommendations to council on a possible bond election in May of twenty twenty. Hope to have those recommendations to council in December, which allows council time in January to take action on which projects they'd like to put on the ballot in May. February fourth is when you will actually have to call the bond election for, for a May election. I know there's some, Gabe has some information that was Lewis forwarded in terms of our debt capacity, and I think he wants to talk about that right now.
Mayor and council, I've got a, a little bit of a statement from Lewis tonight. He had an update to the debt portion of his model. He had some back pain, some back issues, so he couldn't be here with us tonight, so a little bit of humor in this, so. Mayor and council, this is from Lewis McLean. I want to prove to you that I can make a short presentation. I've developed a detailed debt sizing model. We'll run through the slides, there's only about eight of them. Council member Farr had a number of questions he wanted to review, so he and I spent several hours looking at a few key variables in about a hundred and twenty combinations, which I don't doubt. The bottom line is I left off saying to the council that Saginaw could afford about forty million in new debt over the next two years by holding tax rates and ratios about the same. I was given a list of potential projects that reach toward two-
Sorry, Gabe, that said forty million over two years?
Over ten years.
Ten, okay, thank you, thank you.
Just given a list of potential projects that reach toward two hundred million, and Lewis had requested our full CIP as well as all the assessments, parks assessment, Knolls, that sort of thing that you all have previously seen. I can tell you how much you can afford if you can tell me how much you can raise taxes for debt and companion operating costs. Funding capabilities come first. My PowerPoint presentation wraps up with an optimized, not maximum scenario with financially feasible assumptions from my viewpoint, in my, and in my opinion, the bond rating agency's viewpoints. You can fund much more than the baseline forty million, perhaps closer to a hundred million, but only you, with the help of the bond committee, can you decide where you must prioritize and then draw a line on the capital projects the voters will support and pay for. So with that, I'll just run through a few of these slides. So the request of Lewis, if you recall from his previous presentation, within our existing tax rate over the next five years, we can fund approximately forty-one million dollars in new debt without a tax rate increase. Lewis has changed a number of variables to, for this debt sizing model, including tax base growth, rate changes, the allocation of the rate, construction inflation, potential interest rates, and when we actually issue the debt. The previous model was shown with base, tax base growth of approximately four percent. If you were to change that variable to six percent, it would have that effect there. Go from forty-eight million and change to fifty-two, almost fifty-two and a half million.
On, on current rate, not increasing current rate?
That's my understanding, on the current rate.
Yep.
Yep. So the interest and sinking fund portion of the allocation, if that assumption were to change to forty-five percent, that would have the net effect, you can see the second to last bullet point, forty-nine point seven million to a little over sixty-eight million. And the M and O rate would have to be lowered to stay in the, the ratios we've previously discussed.
So it's, it's same rate, but you're building capacity on the INS side by taking from the M and O side?
Correct. Now, the only caveat with that and, and something we need to discuss or make clear to the bond committee is if the recommendation is made to the council for some project that has maintenance obligations, we're absolutely gonna maintain it. If we build a new statue with my likeness, somebody needs to clean that thing every day. It needs to be appropriately lit and well maintained, but that all costs money. I'm sorry, the mayor's likeness, I got a little ahead of myself. So again, if interest rates were to change, another scenario, a variable that could potentially affect how much debt we could issue. The, I think this is the, so interest rate of three and a half percent, we're not gonna hit the market pending a, you know, let's say we had a, a successful issue of some amount in May, we wouldn't be going to the market with bonds until next summer, if not a little further out. Discussion about construction inflation, CPI of five percent, any amount we issue, we're gonna have to combat inflation because these projects take time to design before we can hit the streets with construction contracts. This is a national index related to highway costs, just for kind of general reference?
Let me speak to that for just a second, Gabe. What's important to know here, and this is for council and for the coming bond committee, if you'll go back to that graph, you see the spike that goes way up, and then you see the, the dip that happens within about a four-month period. That's not uncommon in cycles, especially close to election cycles. If we, as a city, are armed with shovel-ready projects to go to the marketplace during a time like that, that is when the city gets the most, the absolute most for its dollar. But if we are not armed with a shovel-ready project, that's about a four-month span. You don't have time to design the project, and you don't have time to take it to the marketplace. You've got to be ready to take it to the marketplace in order to take advantage of a downturn like that. And the only way you can do that is to arm the city with the opportunity to take it to the marketplace. So just want everybody to know, if we're armed with only forty million dollars, we're not armed with enough to take advantage of something like that with all the projects that we have on our list. And that's going to happen. But whether we like it or not, we're going to see that again soon. And knowing that we are going to see that again soon, we need to be able to take advantage of it when the time comes. It looks, the latest update that you see there, I think that was first, is that Q1 twenty nineteen or Q2? I can't see it.
Yeah, I can't tell.
It's probably Q1, but you can see the downturn there, this little tick to the south. We probably won't see anything extreme until May or June of the election year. Next year, when we see the buzz about the upcoming election in November, we'll probably see some extreme movement in this CPI.
So to, for purposes, discussion recap, a number of these assumptions. Tax base growth was increased from the previous presentation to six percent. This would note a total tax rate of sixty cents, so that would be a tax rate increase over our current tax rate. Assumes the allocation of the, the INS portion of the tax rate goes to forty-five percent. Interest rates are at three and a half percent, construction inflation of five percent. With those variables in mind, would give us ninety-six million over a ten-year horizon or approximately a hundred and twenty-seven million over a fifteen-year program, as well as an increase to the operating side of the tax rate. So with that, I guess what we'd like to ask of the council is maybe to set some parameters for our bond committee. Of course, the difficult work is prioritizing all these projects. We want to hear your, your feedback, what the general parameters would be for them going forward, and go from there, get them started in their work.
All right, counsel, thoughts? I'll start at this end, Mary.
What are you referring to when you mention parameters?
So I would say you need to make it difficult on them, and what I mean by that is, we need to know some priority in, in clear fashion, what the priority for projects are, and I think it would be helpful to know if there was, if the committee would support tax rate increases, what their priority with that would be. So it's really easy to, with the forty million or so, we could pick two or three projects, and then we'd be done. I think I would, at least for our own purposes, like to know within this hundred million dollar amount what the priority would be. And then the, the council ultimately is in the driver's seat and will determine what projects, any projects, how much to take to voters potentially in May twenty twenty.
Okay, so.
Is there anything further?
Go ahead, Mary.
Well, I, I think, you know, we do have a need for some new facilities, primarily a new fire station one. I think that, to me, is the biggest priority. And then, of course, the parks improvement program is really something that I think the residents would enjoy and that would enhance our city. Those are my thoughts.
So, so let me just back up. I'd like to hear from you if we're asking them to prioritize forty million or we're asking them to prioritize a hundred million. We may kind of reach the same end goal if we ask them to prioritize a, a larger amount because, you know, we'll have some rain quarter, hopefully.
If we ask them to prioritize a hundred million, I mean, we could wait and see, you know, what their, what their suggestions were and then revisit, and we could always lower that, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So I think we should shoot for the hundred million.
Okay, that's correct.
Go from there.
And again, the council ultimately will make the decision what projects to bring to voters, if any, the total dollar amount, that sort of thing, in February.
Cindy?
Yeah, this puts us in a really bad spot. I know I've heard from a lot of citizens that, you know, they heard about the thirty million dollar park package, and they're aware that there are other multimillion-dollar projects waiting to happen out in the, the wings, but at the same time, they're concerned about how well we're handling the bridge project for twenty million dollars and trying to get a larger dollar bond package when we have no visibility of a bridge, I think is going to be difficult. That being said, if we don't have, if we can prioritize a hundred million and not take the whole hundred million dollar package to the citizens, that might be something that we need to seriously consider.
I think there's a lot of things within the city that we need to look at, to do. And I'm just gonna say, the Knolls, McElroy, just for two, that need work, and that's not gonna be cheap. So, you know, a hundred million dollar bond package, it, it sounds like an awful lot of money, but there's an awful lot of money to be spent. And that, I'm not talking parks or anything else, I'm just talking two major thoroughfares within our city, it's gonna take a lot of money. So, yeah, we need, like Patrick was saying, you know, we need to get the most bang for our buck when the time comes.
Thank you, Charlie. Valerie?
I agree, I think the hundred million.
Okay. Patrick?
Well, the benefit that I have is, is that I worked quite a bit this week with, with Lewis in preparing this sizing model. And the calculus that we used to prepare the sizing model was essentially the Knolls project, all phases, the McElroy project, all phases, the new fire station, the library, and about nine million dollars budgeted towards new park facilities. That was the calculus. So if you, if you put that into perspective, that is about a third of our total projects list. It's not the whole projects list, it's only a third of it. The two biggest projects, obviously, are the all phases of Knolls and all phases of McElroy. With those two streets being essentially the reticle, the crosshairs of our city, they are in dire need of repair, they're in dire need of, of upgrading in terms of widening, in terms of signalization, in terms of safety. They carry a ton of traffic through the city. So I couldn't see in building the calculus of debt sizing, keeping those out. Those had to be included in the calculus in my mind. It landed at a hundred and two million dollars, and that was essentially based on the five percent CPI that we saw. The last, the last two years, the industry has seen more of an eight to twelve percent CPI, so it took quite a bit for, for Lewis to talk me off of eight percent, which at eight percent, it was more in the range of a hundred and thirty million. So we need to know that if we continue to see cost escalation- So we need to know that if we continue to see cost escalation in the construction industry, what's $102 million today is $130 million in 10 years. So we really need to put ourselves in a position where we've got these projects that the bond committee comes back with, designed, get them designed, get them stuck in a drawer, and get them ready to pull the trigger as soon as the market sees a downturn. That's really what we need to be looking at. And the only way we can be armed to do that is that if we're planning a 10- to 15-year strategy in a $100 million bond program, and not a five-year strategy in a $40 million bond program. That's the only way we're going to put ourselves in the driver's seat, in my mind, so...
Thank you, Patrick. Charles?
100 million. 100 million, yeah.
Okay. You got any priorities?
I'd like what Patrick said.
Okay. All right, where I am, I am similar to a lot of folks. I think Knowles is number one. I think Knowles is by far number one, and I know that's 18, 20 million, a big number. So I think you're going to have to get to 100 million, take it to the voters. That will warrant a tax increase, absolutely, over 10 to 15 years. My guess is probably 15, it will take us to spend that kind of money, the rate we usually do. We can't manage too many projects at once, and we probably shouldn't. So 100 million, over 15 years, and my priority list would be Knowles, fire station, senior center, parks, McElroy, library. That would be my priority list. I would seriously look at it, and we talked a little bit about looking at McElroy, maybe an asphalt solution to McElroy that might be quicker, but we can talk about that another time and see how we want to do that. So, yeah, so I think it's going to be big. I think we take it to the voters, and we see what the voters are willing to pony up for. Saying, yes, we can, we can do the 40 million without an increase, but we have needs at this point that are beyond that. So I would be for whatever that number works out to be with a tax increase over the period of time to accommodate the 100 million dollars. So I think that should be the direction to the bond committee and see what they, they think and what they come up with, and let's, let's talk, so...
Mr. Mayor, just want to make one point.
Yes, sir.
Of course, these will be, each ballot initiative will be separate, we have to be very specific. So voters will be able to choose which categories they'd like to approve, so just knowing it's not, it's not an all-or-nothing deal.
No, I understand.
Secondly, the resolution has written, allowed each council member to nominate two citizens to the committee. And at the time we went to press with this, we'd received 13. There was one vacant position, Mr. Beasley, that only nominated one. Before y'all vote on whether or not to approve this resolution, I just wanted to ask Mr. Beasley if he had another nominee, or if he was happy with what he's got.
I'm happy with what I got.
Okay.
Can we, at a future point, amend this list to add another person?
I'm sorry?
At a future time, can we amend this to add another individual?
Of course.
Okay. Because I have a person in mind I would like to ask, and I may ask them tonight, but I would like to do that, so, but just that we have the option, let's do it, let's approve as is, and we can come back later and amend and add another person, so, if everybody's okay with that, potentially.
I will say, we're going to hit the ground running, we're going to get together real quick, and...
Yeah, when are you going to start?
Within the next two weeks, I hope. It's, we'll have a kickoff meeting with the committee members and figure out which night of the week works best for them, and we'll be meeting at least once, maybe two times a month. We'll be meeting, have the committee members meet with not just city staff, but our consultants to talk about the capital improvement projects for things like facilities, streets, and parks improvements. So they're going to get the opportunity to review all that information that y'all seen before and study it in a little bit more detail.
Excellent, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question on procedure in this first meeting. Dolph, are we going to, are we going to be in a position to present to the committee all of the projects so that they get the full, they get the feel of what, what we're really considering here?
Yeah, we'll give them the entire, the entire CIP list that we have in our master plan, we'll provide them a copy of that, give them a big-picture look, and then, now that we've kind of got the dollars narrowed down, we'll start looking at prioritizing the needs by category and preparing recommendations for council.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Cindy?
And how many of the projects on that list include items brought to our attention from the citizen summit? Because we did agree to move forward with that strategic master plan.
I don't have a feel for that, I don't know.
I believe that that documentation should be available to the committee as well, just so they have an understanding.
Weren't several of the parks ones came from that citizen summit? I know at least one, one did. Didn't multiples come from the summit for the park? Parks improvement?
And I believe the library and...
Okay.
Senior Center?
And Senior Center was also on there, but I'd just like to be able to compare and see, you know...
Good idea.
So that way we have the citizens' voices heard.
That's a good idea, absolutely. Council, other questions? Gabe, do you have something else?
Yeah, I believe some of the, the ideas and recommendations from the citizen summit were carried forward into the CIP, but I couldn't tell you the specifics. I do remember the senior center, expanded library. Yeah.
Yeah, but I'd still like that document to be available to the committee.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I just want to make a comment on the parks, the $30 million proposal that's the park component. Those are what you might consider ultimate plans. Kimmy Horn is in a position also to make recommendations to pare those projects down in individual parks, so you can cut and paste, if you will, and, and try to pare those down to something more manageable, if that's the committee's direction. So I didn't want to say that, you know, we got $30 million worth of parks, and it's a do-it-or-not, it could be much less, or, but that would be the ultimate.
Right. But the committee will hear all this information as well, so they can...
Right, and Kimmy Horn has already done some proposals for all the parks, a pared-down version, if you will, so, so the committee can massage that project list within the parks.
Excellent. Mary, do you have a question?
And I, I had commented to Gabe about this once, that in that big, huge parks presentation, which was wonderful, maybe one or two of the smaller parks could even be funded in another way other than the bond project. You know, they would need not very expensive improvements, so they could even just be in the regular budget or come out of the general fund, perhaps.
Good point. All right, council, other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, make a motion that we accept the action regarding the Resolution 2019-17, creating the Citizens Bond Committee and appointing members.
Thank you, Valerie.
Second.
Charlie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed or are not? Excellent. Dolph, move forward. Thank y'all. All right, moving on, item number 11. So at 7:17, we will adjourn to go to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.087 to discuss building improvement grant applications. We will return to adjourn.
We did it, girl.